We gotta turn around. I'll let us say hi.
Yeah, we're ready.
Welcome. I am Mayor John Lewis and we are about to begin our favorite event of the month, the Student Citizen of the Month, and we thank you for coming. We have a lot of different activities that are happening this week and one I'll mention is our Constitution Week. If you have not had a chance to attend that on Saturday night, is the Constitution Week fair? And there will be some flyers on the back table in just a few minutes you can see learning about that. There's also a video and it's called "A More Perfect Union" and it shows what happened when the Constitution was created 225 years ago and it will be showing on Channel 11 tomorrow at noon and Saturday at noon. And outside of that, just have a great weekend and for the students here to be recognized, do whatever you can to please your mom and dad.
[laughter]
One reason why this is such an exciting night is we have some of the finest citizens of Gilbert here and we're going to recognize them and we'll do it in three groups. And the first two groups will be those in elementary school and the third group will be those in junior high and high school. If you need to leave after your groups are done, you may. If you can stay, this Student Citizen of the Month program is about 30 minutes in length. We'll take a short break and then we'll begin our formal town council meeting, but it's great to have you here. And our Group One will be if your elementary school begins with the first letter A to I, and that would be Ashland Ranch to Islands Elementary. We're going to ask you to come on down and stand right behind me and then we'll have you come up one at a time. And so, please come on down. If you are in elementary school and you received a letter, you're in Ashland Ranch or your school starts with a B, C, D, or E and all the way down to I, come on down here. And... I like that. Oh, thank you. That was Councilmember Cooper just handing me. This is the flyer. If you'd like to learn about the Constitution Week that's on the back table. Vice Mayor Sins has this bag that we'll be handing to each student. And tell us what this bag is.
It's Vanna White.
It's Vanna White. Vanna White, what is this?
This is a commemorate our Shop Gilbert bag. Each child will get a bag. And Shop Gilbert is a joint program of the Arizona Republic, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Town of Gilbert. And our tagline is, "Keep your money where your house is." So every time you shop in Gilbert, you help Gilbert and you help yourselves with services that we can provide to you. So use this bag as a reminder. I know a couple of years ago, I was all over Sydney, Australia with one of these, taking pictures and showing everybody. Come to Gilbert.
Thank you. I will also be assisted tonight with four other council members in addition to Vice Mayor Sins. This is Councilmember Jen Daniels, Councilmember Eddie Cook, Councilmember Victor Peterson, and Councilmember Ben Cooper. And when we have the student come up, it will be wonderful to have you get in this vicinity and take a picture. And I'm also looking for our town photographer. So Councilmember Cooper, you know what your assignment is real fast.
Okay.
Thank you. And we'll continue to proceed and if we need to come back and do some pictures. And then at the end of this first group, we'll have them gather together for a group picture. So before we begin, there's one additional group I wanted to thank. If you are a teacher, a school administrator, or one of the school leaders here to cheer on any of the Student Citizens of the Month, if you could please stand. We wanted to recognize you right now. As our, those to be recognized would say, there's a statement that was made about teachers. And it is that the greatest and noblest calling of all is that of teaching. And so to our greatest, we thank you for being here. But we have some other great ones. And so, Councilmember Daniels, if you can get us started, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first student from Ashland Ranch Elementary, Gracie Walczewski.
Come on down here, we're going to...
From Burke Elementary, Alina DeRienzo.
This is Erin's teacher. And we better just...
I don't have to take a picture.
And what grade is it again?
I teach self-contained.
Wonderful. Thank you for being here. And please, that round of applause you heard, if you can repeat that tomorrow, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know what you were thinking. I look adorable, don't I?
From Houston Elementary, Kyle Muir. And from Islands Elementary, Jenna Nguyen.
Is that our Group One? So best we can, come on up in this vicinity. We're going to get close together. We're going to do a group picture. And you can go ahead and hold up your plaques if you'd like. Our Group Two would be anyone else in elementary, if you could please come forward. And so this would be basically if you have an elementary school that begins with the letter J to Z. That Group Two looks like a Group One. Wonderful. Okay, Councilmember Daniels, you may begin.
From Quartz Hill Elementary, Gabby Jordan. And last but not least, Mayor, from Valvista Lakes Elementary, Jacob Weszalowski.
I know you love my dimples and want to take pictures of them, but Group Two, let's have you come forward and... Group Three, if you're in junior high or high school, come on down. Should we take a picture?
If you want to.
Oh, we'd love to. Should we do the three of us?
Sure.
Great. Let's have you turn around like that.
Mayor, do you want me to...
Okay. So we're gonna hold this like picture. Everybody can see it.
We have a special guest that just arrived. I think it was Erin, Group One.
Yes, and he's from...
All right. We're gonna pose for a Group One picture and thank you for your patience.
Erin's from Chaparral Elementary. His name is Erin Fairbanks.
Councilmember Daniels, our Group Three, let's continue.
Is it Alina? Alina Gorman, I apologize. You can always tell when the high school kids are a little disappointed when I mispronounced their name. Gilbert High School, Jennifer And Mayor, I think we know who the Williams Field High guy is. Shandon Kaufman.
I'll just mention for those who can stay, Shandon will also be receiving his special recognition in the formal council meeting, which will be a few minutes past seven. It's good to have you here. Great football game last Friday night. Who was it who won the coin toss for Williams Field High?
Yourself too.
Yeah, okay. All right. Well, I won't be bragging, but it was a great game and Williams Field High pulled it out, big victory. And now we'll pose for the picture. Big round of applause for Group Three. Thank you. There is much that could be said about those who came forward. And in many cases, some of you might not even know why you were nominated. In some cases, you do. Whatever it is you're doing, where you've been noticed as a Citizen of the Month for your school, please keep doing it. You are finest in Gilbert. We thank you as parents, as teachers, for coming and being part of this. And for those of you who have homework tonight, make sure on the way home, you go to Dairy Queen or the place to get ice cream. You deserve it. And that's part of the shopping in Gilbert. If you can, or get some of the ice cream at home. But thank you again for being here. That ends our Student Citizen of the Month. Thank you. Jordan.
We mailed no one to accept. We didn't receive it. Oh, no. Not 7A.
The code you entered is invalid. You're the first party to join the call.
is 281.
My name is AJ Frazier, I'm a tenderfoot, and my troop is 281.
My name is Brandon Vasquez, I'm rank tenderfoot, and my troop is 281.
My name is Ellen Haymore, and my rank is 281, and my troop is 281, and my rank is
First Class.
I'm Ethan Arkel, and my troop is 281, and my rank is tenderfoot.
My name is Michael Molina.
I'm First Class, and my troop is 281.
My name is Chad Nelson, I'm in troop 281, and I'm a life.
My name is Zach Kokenauer, I'm a first class, and my troop number is 538.
My name is Josh Russell, my rank is First Class, and I'm troop 482.
Hi, my name is Michael Colgan, I'm tenderfoot, and my troop is 285.
We appreciate the Scouts. I've just handed each of them a copy of the Constitution, they'll need that for some of those other merit badges that they'll be working on. And we appreciate the leadership that they provide in our community. Mayor Lewis, we see our Scouts all over town, they show up at different events and represent the community very well. We appreciate all of their efforts. Let's give them a nice round of applause.
For our Scouts, this happens to be in our United States, the National Preparedness Month. And there's this Scout motto, that you do so well in helping our nation with that National Preparedness Month. What's the Scout motto? Be prepared. So, at the count of three, if you can just remind us of those two important words, and then you may be seated and continue to listen, and thank you for being here. One, two, three. That's what I thought they were saying. Thank you very much, you may be seated. Our Deputy Clerk will now conduct the roll call.
Vice Mayor Sents.
Thank you, Mayor. If Shannon Kaufman could come down, please. Thank you. One of the great things about Mayor Lewis is he shares with us, stand over on this side, shares with us as a council member's opportunity to thank and congratulate outstanding citizens of Gilbert, and tonight's no exception. We appreciate the mayor for sharing this with us. Shannon Kaufman here has been awarded the 2012 Alexander Hamilton Citizenship Achievement Award, which is a huge honor. Only 35 in the country that have received that award. I'm going to ask Shannon to just tell us a little bit about this prestigious award.
This award is based on Alexander Hamilton and his leadership and the way he represented democracy, and it basically is to support leaders in the United States. And so, it's all across the United States, and 17 states are represented in our cohort. And it's a two-year program where we do trips, we go, and we're going to do service trip in Guatemala, we're going to go to Seattle, Washington. And it basically helps prepare us for college, it gives us funds for applying to college, and it helps us become stronger leaders than we already are.
Very good. And you are a wonderful leader, and I've talked a little bit before the meeting with you and heard some of the great things that you've done to receive this award, and so we congratulate you. And with that, I'd like to read this from Mayor Lewis. "As mayor of the town of Gilbert, it's my pleasure to extend congratulations to Shannon Kaufman for being awarded the 2012 Alexander Hamilton Citizenship Achievement Award for outstanding achievement in community service. The Hamilton Award recognizes high school students for their academic, personal service, entrepreneurial achievements, and to select students for the Hamilton Leaders Academy. As a student at Williams Field High School, Shannon was chosen for his outstanding scholastic achievement and demonstrated leadership aptitude. Recognized for his passion for his community and volunteer efforts for both on and off campus, Shannon was also chosen for his gratitude, compassion for and acceptance of others. As one of 35 outstanding national winners, Shannon received a cash scholarship and acceptance into the Hamilton Leaders Academy. It is our honor to congratulate Shannon for his achievements. His accomplishment has clearly demonstrated an ability to achieve one's goals in life and has set a shining example for others. On behalf of the Gilbert Town Council and the residents of our community, I hereby commend Shannon Kaufman for the honor he has brought not only to himself, but to his family, school, and community. The town and its residents are proud of him and wish Shannon continued success." That'll be signed by the mayor. So I will hand this, let me hand this to you, and we'll ask the mayor to come up maybe for a picture. And before we do the picture, why don't we, a round of applause.
Thank you.
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 Councilmember Daniels, something very special happened this morning. We had an Economic Development Ambassador Forum, and there was a special recognition. Can you tell us more?
I'd love to, Mayor. Thank you for this opportunity. We have a very special business in our town. They've been in our town for 20 years. They had a building in our Heritage District. They were a valuable member of that small community that we like to dub as the hometown center of Gilbert. A great, great company. There was a unfortunate event that caused a bit of heartache. And I think, Mayor, it might be best if we go directly to the video, and then we will invite those individuals to come up. But I want people to see the story that's told straight from Barb and Pete's mouth as they talk about Teas and Moore and the wonderful company that they have.
We're a screen printing and embroidery company, family owned and run. We've been in business since 1993, so we're going on 20 years in March. We were in Old Town Historical Downtown Gilbert, which was actually, I had worked for a place for about four years to be down there. It's a very quaint part of town, kind of that Mayberry kind of feeling, and that's where I wanted to be. And I thought a t-shirt shop for custom t-shirts was a very nice fit. July 14th, the weather looked pretty ominous, and so I talked my husband, who was always there, not to go that day. But about 3:19, I got a phone call from the alarm system, said there was some problem at the shop. The roof had collapsed. The roof had totally collapsed on my automatic screen printing equipment, my manual presses, my dryers, anything that had to do with screen printing was in fact destroyed. My greatest or saddest part of this event is that for the very first time in 20 years, I missed a deadline. That was probably very disheartening. That was probably the worst part to take because I had to tell the customer, "I'm sorry, I know your event is Saturday, but there isn't anything I can do." It appears as though perhaps we've lost the sound on this video, but the building was demoed. We were back up and running, probably within two weeks, we would be able to be back up and functional, which is unheard of in trying to get a business up and running that has equipment that requires special needs, as ours does. I can't say enough about the town. The town council has stopped by, Ben Cooper stopped by, Jen Daniels, everybody has been so supportive in making sure that solutions are for us, and we just need to make sure we choose the right one. Recognized for his passion for his community and volunteer efforts for both on and off campus, Shannon was also chosen for his gratitude, compassion for, and acceptance of others. As one of 35 outstanding national winners, Shannon received a cash scholarship and acceptance into the Hamilton Leaders Academy. It is our honor to congratulate Shannon for his achievements. His accomplishment has clearly demonstrated an ability to achieve one's goals in life and has set a shining example for others. On behalf of the Gilbert Town Council and the residents of our community, I hereby commend Shannon Kaufman for the honor he has brought not only to himself, but to his family, school, and community. The town and its residents are proud of him and wish Shannon continued success." That'll be signed by the mayor. So, I will hand this -- let me hand this to you, and we'll get -- ask the mayor to come up maybe for a picture. And before we do the picture, why don't we -- a round of applause.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniels, something very special happened this morning. We had an Economic Development Ambassador Forum, and there was a special recognition. Can you tell us more?
I'd love to, Mayor. Thank you for this opportunity. We have a very special business in our town. They've been in our town for 20 years. They had a building in our Heritage District. They were a valuable member of that small community that we like to dub as our -- the hometown center of Gilbert. A great, great company. There was a unfortunate event that caused a bit of heartache. And I think, Mayor, it might be best if we go directly to the video, and then we will invite those individuals to come up. But I want people to see the story that's told straight from Barb and Pete's mouth as they talk about T's and More and the wonderful company that they have.
We're a screen printing and embroidery company, family-owned and run. We've been in business since 1993, so we're going on 20 years in March. We were in Old Town Historical Downtown Gilbert, which was actually -- I had worked for a place for about four years to be down there. It's a very quaint part of town, kind of that Mayberry kind of feeling. And that's where I wanted to be. And I thought a t-shirt shop for custom t-shirts was a very nice fit. July 14th, the weather looked pretty ominous, and so I talked my husband, who was always there, not to go that day. But about 3:19, I got a phone call from the alarm system. Said there was some problem at the shop. The roof had collapsed. The roof had totally collapsed on my automatic screen printing equipment, my manual presses, my dryers. Anything that had to do with screen printing was in fact destroyed. My greatest or saddest part of this event is that for the very first time in 20 years, I missed a deadline. That was probably very disheartening. That was probably the worst part to take, because I had to tell the customer, "I'm sorry. I know your event is Saturday, but there isn't anything I can do."
It appears as though perhaps we've lost the sound on this video, but the building was demoed.
One of my very first phone calls was to the SBA, which is the Small Business Alliance. By 8:30 Monday morning, we had a meeting with Patrick, the town manager, property management companies that they had gotten together. And it was all done within just about 20 or 30 minutes of us meeting and putting everybody at the same table. And then we turned to the town and said the town would help. They did not want to see another small business go out of business in Gilbert, and that they would help in any way that they can. So, they have actually assigned people to help us walk through this process as quickly as possible to make sure that we're in a new facility and up and running as quick as we can. We were back up and running. Probably within two weeks, we would be able to be back up and functional, which is unheard of in trying to get a business up and running that has equipment that requires special needs, as ours does. I can't say enough about the town. The town council has stopped by. Ben Cooper stopped by. Jen Daniels. Everybody has been so supportive in making sure that solutions are for us. We just need to make sure we choose the right ones that work for everybody. Now, we're in a big-time shopping facility. Actually, a great location. We have the CVS Pharmacy, one location this way, subway south of us. And between the two, all I have to do is say those two locations, and everybody knows where we're at now. I hope someday, my goal is to be, "Hey, you know where T's and More is? We're next to them." Our goal is to get back up bigger, stronger, and serve our customers as best we can for the future.
Thank you. Mayor Lewis has aptly dubbed this "The Gilbert Miracle." And if we could have Barb and Pete and your team come on down, we'd love to take this opportunity to recognize you. And they call themselves a small business, but they ship internationally. They have customers all over the world. And we are very grateful that they have continued to choose Gilbert, that they've worked hard to be here. It's a family business. They work together to make this happen. So, Barb, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Wow, it said that the video is so well-done. I couldn't have edited any better myself, and I have no talent. Again, I just want to say thanks to the town, to the SBA. If it hadn't been for them, we would have been out of business, or we would have done something else, or I don't know. I'm thinking about taking the insurance money and retired. I'm not sure. We are a family-run business. This is my daughter Courtney. She does all of our embroidery. This is my other daughter Jennifer, my grandson, grand, who is upcoming, running. He thinks he's going to take the company really international. My husband Peter and Haley are very trusted and great employees. She stayed with us through all of this. So, again, I want to say thank you to the town, the SBA, Capital Assets, who helped us through this process as well.
Thank you so much. Mayor, we'll pass this mic back to you.
Let's do a picture with the family real fast. And if the family could stay put. SBA family, come on down. Let's have you get behind her for another picture. And as you're coming down, a special event occurred today. As I mentioned, we had our Economic Development Ambassador Forum. We have some great business leaders in town. In the forum this morning, the Small Business Alliance was given a special recognition, an Ambassador Excellence Award. And yes, I believe this could be called "The Gilbert Miracle" because from when the disaster occurred, to so many people coming together to have a business up and running, it was amazing to watch. It kind of reminds me, and this is the symbolism I see, that one of the presenters this morning, we were talking about aviation, aerospace, and defense, was Colonel Webb from Luke Air Force Base. And we have a replica of the F-35 behind us. And part of that presentation was what that means to the Arizona economy. Well, the symbolism is real. And so, I don't know if we can get a picture from this angle with the F-35 in the background, but that Gilbert miracle had everything to do with a group of people, the can-do attitude that said, "We are going to find a way to get back up in the air." So, picture time. Big round of applause for those involved with "The Gilbert Miracle." Vice Mayor Sence, we'll turn to you for the next agenda item.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to talk about a little different kind of a miracle. And the people that are going to be coming down here to represent the people that actually are the miracle workers are the volunteers at SEVRAR's Angels. So, Andy, if you and Barney and your team can come down, please. Why don't you introduce yourself and then tell us a little -- you said Barney's going to tell the long story? Okay.
I'm going to tell a short story. The purpose behind the SEVRAR Angels slash American Angels is to bring a touch of home to deployed soldiers and their families. We've been working for five years on this project, sending handcrafted Afghans to military hospital scarves, helmet liners, slippers to deploy troops. We also work with the World War II National Museum to make scarves for veterans to be handed out at veterans associations nationwide. We do toys for tots, cell phones for soldiers. And I do this with the help of 125 ladies that aren't here tonight. Most of them are elderly and they can't drive at night. And we're having a presentation next week at the Southeast Valley Association of Realtors for them. And Captain Sence is going to be giving them the proclamation, and I really wanted them to be surprised.
Andy Fagley.
Janet Kane. I'm the Chief Executive Officer for the Southeast Valley Regional Association of Realtors.
Thank you. And I know when I deployed to Vietnam 100 years ago for a 12-month deployment, we didn't have angels. We didn't have email. We didn't have video. Occasionally, we got a letter. So, the service that these people are providing, these volunteers, and the mayor and I have attended the last two years. We're going to be there next Friday at their get-together. And it's -- I hate to say it, but it's always -- sorry, Barney, you got me all messed up now. It's a -- it is an emotional time when you think back. I know when I left for Vietnam, my daughter was 18 days old when I came back, 13 months old. So, it's tough. So, they do, as she said, they do bring a piece of home to our deployed men and women in the service. So, it's my honor to read a proclamation from the Town of Gilbert, from the office of the mayor. It says, "Whereas, the Southeast Valley Regional Association of Realtors Board of Directors understands the importance of projects such as the SEVRAR Support Our Troops Campaign. And whereas, in January 2008, the SEVRAR Angels started the Support Our Troops Campaign. And whereas, the SEVRAR Angels donate their time and talent to handcraft comfort items for enlisted men and women deployed overseas and their families. And whereas, these volunteers have crafted items such as comfort gans for the wounded troops, slippers, helmet liners, and lap afghans for those in wheelchairs. And whereas, in the past five years, the SEVRAR Angels have completed over 11,000 items and used enough yarn to stretch from Mesa to Chicago and back. Now, therefore, John W. Lewis, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, Arizona, does hereby proclaim the week of September 20th, 2012 as SEVRAR Angels Day. Signed, John W. Lewis, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert."
Congratulations.
Vice Mayor Sence, I'll say this about Barney. It's really hard to get her to show her emotions. You just don't know how she tells about our veterans. And of course, I say that sarcastically because when we have attended the last two years, it's been very inspiring. And thank you very much. Councilmember Cook will proceed in -- with Agenda Items Four and Five. Is it Five and Six?
Could I have those wonderful teen volunteers that could please come here for receiving an award or recognition here? Could you just introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Nick, and unfortunately, not all the teens could be here today due to scheduling conflicts. But I'm sure they'd be very proud and honored by what you're presenting to me today.
Thank you. And who else do we have here?
Good evening. I'm Chilo Fero. I'm an area director for Boys and Girls Club of the East Valley. And right now, with Nick representing the teens.
Well, thank you, Nick, and your rest of your volunteers. Let me just read this little certificate of appreciation on behalf of the mayor and the town council. "The mayor and town council recognizes and applauds the youth for volunteering, for your generous and compassionate donation of your time spent reading stories about past Gilbert Hispanic families to the Boys and Girls Club children. For your participation in this admirable program promoted a sense of community and helped to bring awareness to many contributions that Hispanic families have made to development of the town and impact these influence in Gilbert. So, on behalf of the town, council, and the mayor, and the citizens of our community, we thank you." Mayor, we have a round of applause. Next, could I have Jessica and Carrie and Mary? Mary Ellen, is she here? Thank you. And could I have the board members of HR CAP? Could you please come? Please come up. Carrie is going to read the proclamation in Spanish. And the folks here can follow along in English if you like, and the folks at home can do as well. And I'd like, first of all, if you could just introduce yourself to the public.
I'm Mary Ellen Freskes. I've lived in Gilbert since 1994.
I'm Libby Pierce. We did not know we were going to get up here tonight at all.
I'm Diane Phels, Commissioner and HR CAP.
Johanny Cut, Chair of HR CAP Commission.
Thank you.
And I'm Carrie Mendoza with the Town of Gilbert. Buenas noches, good evening. De la Oficina del Alcalde, proclamación. Considerando durante mes de gerencia hispana, permanecemos a estar consciente de las muchas contribuciones insuperables que los hispanos han hecho en el crecimiento y el desarrollo del pueblo de Gilbert y la nación. Y considerando hispanos son un reflejo de la diversidad de América. Representan una gran variedad de nacionalidades y fondos con una herencia común. Hispanos son personas que han mostrado perseverancia y devoción profunda a su fe religiosa. Un orgullo apasionado en las virtudes de la familia, comunidad, y nunca desviarán el compromiso de trabajar duro y sacrificio aguantando gran obstáculos duraderos. Y considerando hispanos representan y soportan una herencia enriquecida que atraviesa un tiempo cuando Arizona fue un parte de tierras reclamados por España. Por su nacimiento de un territorio a la estadidad el 14 de febrero de 1912 hasta el presente. Esta herencia está meticulosamente entretejida a través de la tela de la vida en América. Y considerando hispanos han desempeñado un papel significativo y consistente en formar al crecimiento cultural de Gilbert desde su comienzo de una comunidad rural pequeña a la posición corriente siendo una comunidad de las más vibrantes comunidades metropolitanas en el país. Y considerando través de la historia del pueblo de Gilbert, hispanos han proporcionado contribuciones importantes a su diversidad y son instrumentales enriqueciendo la calidad de la vida en los artes, ciencia, tecnología, deportes, políticas, y los muchos esfuerzos importantes que mejora la vida de toda la comunidad. Y considerando el pueblo de Gilbert reconoce esta herencia y las muchas contribuciones sobresalientes de hispanos. Y ahora, por lo tanto, yo, John W. Lewis, alcalde del pueblo de Gilbert, declaro el 15 de septiembre 2012 hasta el 15 de octubre 2012 como mes de la herencia hispana en Gilbert, a marcar las muchas contribuciones, a dar honor, y celebrar la cultura y herencia de hispanos en el pueblo de Gilbert, Arizona.
Thank you. Thank you very much in receiving the proclamation of our Gilbert Hispanic Month. Do you have a few words you want to say?
Buenas noches y muchas gracias por esta proclamación. Las palabras son muy importantes y muy fuertes. Y por todos los latinos aquí en Gilbert, les doy gracias. Mayor Lewis and members of the council and members of HR CAP. I don't know why I was selected to receive this, but I'm honored and I'm humbled on behalf of all Latinos here in Gilbert. I think that the words of the proclamation are very important, and they're very strong, and they're very, I think, endearing to all Latinos. As you all know, Latinos in Arizona, in Metro Phoenix, in the East Valley, and here in Gilbert are a growing minority. And I hope that in the future, it isn't just September when we celebrate our beautiful culture, but that we find reasons every single day to honor this beautiful culture. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mary Ellen, I'm going to shift to the next agenda item. And you are such a part of this, I might ask you to stay. As Mary Ellen, some of you know, has done so much for our community related to the arts. Larry, if you can come on down, I am going to read a proclamation that will declare the month of October as celebrating the Arts Month. And Larry Whitesell, who is coming down, is the Director of the Higley Center for the Performing Arts. A lot of great things happen there. And Larry, just come right over here to my right. What we talked about with that Economic Development Ambassador Forum today was this thing called STEM, and science, technology, engineering, and math. And when we add that "A," the arts, STEAM. And that really makes things happen. So, if you could introduce yourself, I kind of did that, but so that you can do it firsthand, tell us who you are.
I'm Larry Whitesell, the manager of the Higley Center for the Performing Arts.
And I'm going to read the proclamation. "Whereas, the power of the arts builds bridges and enriches lives in our community and brings people together through creative expression and contributes to the vibrancy of a community. And whereas, everyone deserves the opportunity to study, understand, and contribute to the arts. And whereas, the mayor's breakfast, which will be held in October, and we'll give more details to the public on that shortly, with the arts is an opportunity to celebrate performing and visual arts education and presentation. And whereas, lifelong advocacy of the arts increases awareness of our cultural diversity, the role of the arts in enhancing education and addressing social issues, and the contribution the arts make to the economy and our quality of life. Therefore, I, John Lewis, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert and the State of Arizona, do hereby proclaim October 2012, celebrating the Arts Month." Larry, if you could hold that right there. And some of our key arts leaders and from our HR CAP. Alan, I saw you out there. Alan Fitzgerald. Alan Fitzgerald, come on up real fast for this picture. The art intersection. And of course, I could bring a few more up, but this is leadership in the Town of Gilbert that are making some great things happen with that A that's part of that word STEAM. Vice Mayor Sence, our Gilbert Chamber of the Commerce on Shop Gilbert Program, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
Kathy, and your team, you want to come on down?
I was not on the project when it was first started, but Shop Gilbert is a very important project to the Town of Gilbert. Come on down. Linda? She doesn't get... Alan, come on. People are camera shy, what's the deal? Anyway, I'm going to have Kathy give us a little background on the program. As I mentioned earlier, when we did Student of the Month, it is a joint project partnership between Town of Gilbert, the Arizona Republic, and the Chamber of Commerce. So Kathy, you want to give us a little background on the project, please? And while I... As I am Dana White tonight, I hold the bag.
Thanks, Vice Mayor Sence. And the bookmark, thank you. We're very proud that Shop Gilbert is in its sixth year of an awareness campaign, as John mentioned, a partnership with the town, the republic, and the chamber. And over the years, we've done several different things. And really, it's all about getting the message out that when you shop in Gilbert, you support our local businesses, but in turn, all of those sales tax dollars go right back to our community. And so we wanted people to first be aware of all the businesses that are available in Gilbert, but also that by shopping Gilbert, you're helping your community. So when you make that decision to go across the border to do some shopping, you're helping somebody else's community. And so a lot of people aren't aware of even our boundaries. And so it's all a big awareness campaign. And I think if you look at some of the financial results that the Town of Gilbert has right now in their sales tax dollars, I would say that's a big win for Gilbert. I wanted to recognize that Sarah Watts, who is on our staff, is the liaison and does all the behind-the-scenes work to make all of the programs that we have in Shop Gilbert keep moving. And Anthony Miles, I'm going to introduce the videos here in just a few minutes, but Anthony Miles is our video productionist. And Linda Abbott, former councilwoman, Linda Abbott, brought this to us about seven years ago, this project. And so she's been involved from the very beginning. And then Alan has joined our committee this year as well. Tad Peelin can't be here tonight, but when we look at the videos, he actually wrote the videos. And we're going to release those throughout the year at different times. You'll see they have different themes so that we keep that message fresh. If you've ever been involved in video production, you'll realize that for every 10 seconds of video time, it took about two and a half hours to set up and get the right photo. And so Sarah was instrumental in making all the arrangements, making sure all the volunteers were where they needed to be, and the weather, and all kinds of things that happened. And so thank you very much. She did a great job. And Anthony, bless you because it's very, very hot in the summer and we've been filming a lot during that time. And he was out there with his camera for hours at a time. So just real pleased to unveil these tonight. This will be the first, the only time you're going to see them all at one time. So after that, we'll release them throughout the year.
And what's the tagline for Shop Gilbert?
Keep your money where your house is.
Very good. Now, you probably didn't realize that at the council meeting tonight, we were having the Cannes Film Festival, or this is what, the Emmy Awards? Because we've got all these different videos we're showing. So I don't know who's going to roll them. Or Anthony's going to do it? Okay. So these are four different videos, four different topics. And sit back and relax and it's not Thursday night football, but it'll be fun.
Ready? Should I have to plan tonight? To Shop Gilbert means to keep your hard-earned dollars right here in your own town. Many residents are taking seriously the call to Shop Gilbert and ensure revenue for libraries, parks, police, and fire services remains in town. If you have lived here for a while, you've seen the addition of great retail, restaurants, and entertainment options. And those options don't end because the sun goes down. Going out to catch a show? Gilbert has some of the best movie theaters and live theater in the state. Day/night, grab a bite, and watch that movie in 3D right around the corner from your house. Enjoy a show at Hickley Center for the Performing Arts, or visit Gilbert's own Historical Museum and Heritage District. Strike out on purpose by hitting the bowling lanes, or enjoy the best in live musical entertainment. Take your furry friends to Cosmo Dog Park, one of the best in the nation. After a stroll that includes window shopping and art galleries and one-of-a-kind boutiques, let the kids get their feet wet at Water Tower Park. Or take your family to the Riparian Institute's Gilbert Rotary Centennial Observatory for Galactic Stargazing. Shopping Gilbert and enjoying all our great town has to offer doesn't end when the sun goes down. Get out and enjoy the vibrant nightlife in our town. And thank you for shopping Gilbert. To Shop Gilbert means to keep your hard-earned dollars right here in your own town. Many residents are taking seriously the call to Shop Gilbert and ensure revenue for libraries, parks, police, and fire services remains in town. If you have lived here for a while, you've seen the addition of great retail, restaurants, and entertainment options. We hope you have also taken note of the medical facilities and services available at Gilbert that have made Gilbert one of the leading healthcare communities in the state. While our community experienced record growth in the last decade and well-planned beautiful subdivisions sprang to life, medical facilities not only kept pace, but in fact, Gilbert now has many of the best, most advanced healthcare centers in the country. Did you know you live in the city that hosts the nation's number-one healing hospital, a cancer center rated number-one in the nation? State-of-the-art facilities in your own town are making use of the latest breakthrough in medical technology. In addition to many of the leading hospitals, Gilbert is home to urgent care centers and medical complexes that ensure you don't need to leave Gilbert for your health-related needs. The next time your physician orders x-rays, bloodwork, or diagnostic testing, be sure to ask for a Gilbert facility. You'll be insured of top-notch care while staying close to home. A real win-win if there ever was one. Thanks for watching and thanks for shopping Gilbert. To Shop Gilbert means to keep your hard-earned dollars right here in your own town. Many residents are taking seriously the call to Shop Gilbert and ensure revenue for libraries, parks, police, and fire services remains in town. If you have lived here for a while, you've seen the addition of great retail, restaurants, and entertainment options. Did you all meet also have a great deal of local industry and service companies of all types operating in Gilbert? Does your car need repair or body work? No need to leave your town to get work done. And getting a ride looking its best is also easy when you take advantage of one of the many great car wash or detailing places in town. Many residents own business or work right here in Gilbert. What you may not know is how many local service companies are available to help with those not-so-glamorous behind-the-scenes aspects of business that customers rarely see. Whether you need underground grease wrap service, new floor cover, building supplies, fire systems inspected, alarm systems installed, or heating and cooling repairs, think locally and look first for Gilbert service companies to help with these needs. Your own Shop Gilbert website is a great place to look for those local resources. All of our homes and businesses eventually need a nice new coat of paint. We hope you will think locally and buy your paint or hire your painter in Gilbert next time you have the opportunity. We are all turning to the internet more and more when making buying decisions. Even buying online can benefit local companies. You might be amazed to know how many items, from cleaning solvents to exercise equipment, from electrical components and lights to gumball machines, are made right here in your town. Make it a habit to search for Gilbert, Arizona-made products before you buy online. If your business is trying to improve its social media presence, enhance email marketing efforts, or beef up its web presence, local companies, big and small, stand ready to help. Our hope is you will think about the impact of shopping local every time you are faced with a buying decision. Thanks for watching and thanks for shopping Gilbert. To Shop Gilbert means to keep your hard-earned dollars right here in your own town. Many residents are taking seriously the call to Shop Gilbert and ensure revenue for libraries, parks, police, and fire services remains in town. If you have lived here for a while, you've welcomed the addition of great retail, restaurants, and entertainment options. And those options don't end because it's another hot summer in the desert. There are many ways to keep cool and we hope you will at the same time consider keeping it local. Certainly, you are going to end up in the pool at the mall or even heading out of town. This year, as you seek to keep cool, think about buying those pool toys, tanning lotion, swimsuits, and travel items right here in Gilbert. Buying online from out-of-state companies or making purchases in neighboring cities contributes nothing to the Gilbert tax base. Take a look at the Shop Gilbert website to find a cool business before making these purchases. You'll be glad you did. Looking to cool off? There are plenty of inside destinations, but even in the summer, there are plenty of outdoor options to think about. Load up at a local business on your poolside needs and then hit one of the many public or private pools around town. Lucky enough to have your own pool? Please think Gilbert when it comes time to maintain your pool and buy those chemicals and other pool equipment right here in Gilbert. Of course, you might need some new patio furniture, a grill, a misting system, or an outdoor music setup for entertainment. No longer do you have to look elsewhere to find an excellent selection of items to make your own backyard the top of the block. What could be cooler than a frozen tree in the summer? Your town has an abundance of local ice cream and gelato spots that satisfy your sweet tooth. Think about taking in a movie, topping off the evening with a delicious cool dessert. Packing up the car and heading out of town to eat to eat? Think Gilbert with getting your car ready for the trip. If even a few of you awesome Gilbert residents heed the call to Shop Gilbert, the impact on the revenue for our town will be great. Thanks for watching and thanks for shopping Gilbert.
Four really good videos and as Kathy said, we're going to be rotating them through on Channel 11. Do you have any final comments you want to make?
I've got to look at my notes. I thought I was going to be at the podium. The next project that we'll probably be taking on is working with the high schools. One of the key foundations of a lot of our programming in the last couple of years is giving students the opportunity for service learning. And so we're going to get with the high schools and create a curriculum and criteria for different high schools to submit their favorite, submit and produce their favorite Shop Gilbert video, and then have the community vote on which one is best, and we'll get a prize for that.
All right, thank you. So remember, put your money where your mouth, or your house is, not your mouth. Well, I'll just jump in on the mouth. Where did we get that gelato? I think we should end the meeting and go get some of that. That was... Sounds like a great idea. Thank you very much. Thank you, the chamber, for those wonderful videos.
Eight o'clock.
Dwayne, 7A, we celebrate Constitution Week and Victor, here you go.
And you didn't do anything. I've got two microphones, I guess I don't need that. Mayor, it is my great privilege, well, it's your proclamation, but thank you for offering me the great privilege of reading it. And before we do that, though, I want to recognize Dwayne Farnsworth here, representing Constitution Week USA. They have a celebration, actually, this weekend. We've got a flyer. I'm sure we can get you one if you want to learn more about it. But it's a great celebration to celebrate the Constitution. This Saturday, the main event is on the 22nd and the, our great musical guest will be Alex Boyer, and he will perform songs from his new album, Calling America. And so this is an awesome event, and I'm going to just pass the mic here for a second to Dwayne, and he can share any thoughts he has, and then we'll go on to the proclamation.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson, I'm here on behalf of the Executive Committee of Constitution Week USA that consists of Barb Stoll, Bill Norton, Paul Muellerman, Candace Koppel, as well as Jason Barney and myself. And we direct dozens of volunteers to help to put on the Constitution Week celebrations where our purpose is to help youth and the adults of Gilbert to understand the great heritage that we have in the Constitution. This past Monday, September 17th, was the 225th anniversary of the signing of the, not the Declaration, of the U.S. Constitution. And we've been celebrating here in Gilbert for 11 years. This is our 11th year. We'd like to thank the existing town council, mayor, and all who have supported us with this proclamation now, but also for their individual efforts over the years for helping found, Mayor Lewis helped found Constitution Week, and for all of those council members over the years who have individually helped us to make it as a great event. As recently as last night, when Councilmember Peterson and Councilmember Daniels spoke before and taught nearly 400 Boy Scouts at Scout Night about our great community here at Gilbert, Arizona. We would like to invite anybody who would like to see a tremendous performance of the National Anthem like you've never seen before. Alex Boyer will be presenting that at the fair on Saturday night. The fair opens up at 6:00 PM and the show begins at 8:30. You don't want to miss the National Anthem because it's a wonderful presentation. It's a family event. We could use all the volunteers for next year. Like I mentioned, we have dozens of volunteers that take characters into the Gilbert Public Schools and speak as founders and colonists about the great struggles that they had and why the United States Constitution was developed and formed and presented. We could use continued help from Gilbert Public Schools. They've been wonderful. I can't say enough to this council what all the department's heads of Gilbert have done for us the last couple, three years. Thank you very much for your efforts. When we get together, they know what they're doing. They bring everybody together to make our program work for, both for the volunteers as well as for the citizens. So I guess I would just say in closing, on behalf of the citizens, thank you for supporting us, for, thank you to the volunteers who help, invite you to come and be with us, and thank you for this proclamation today.
We, it's a team effort, and we are so grateful to Constitution Week USA for their efforts. And I think we have the distinguished honor of being recognized as the largest Constitution Week celebration in the country. Am I correct on that? That's true. So in Gilbert, Arizona, what a wonderful honor that is. And so whereas Sept... I can't read it in Spanish, I wish I could, I'm sorry. Whereas September 17th, 2012 marks the 225th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, John W. Lewis, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through September 23rd, 2012, as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution, of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. And we thank you, Mayor, for that proclamation. Let's give him a hand. Thank you very much.
I know it is part of Constitution Week that there is a video titled The More Perfect Union that demonstrates in Hollywood-style production what happened 225 years ago, and it will be shown on Channel 11 tomorrow at noon and also Saturday at noon, and it's called The More Perfect Union. And Dwayne, thank you, we look forward to it. And Dwayne, thank you, and we look forward to the big show on Saturday night. On the agenda, we move to communication from citizens. We have not received any, and I'll just look across council chambers and confirm that is the case. Thank you. Next, the consent calendar. As noted, all items listed below are considered consent calendar items and may be approved by a single motion unless removed at the request of council for further discussion or action. Other items on the agenda may be added, excuse me, to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. Vice Mayor Sins, what requests do we have?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent calendar with the following changes. Item 13 will be continued to October 4th, 2012. Item 19 has been requested to pull. And I'd like to add item 22, which is the appointment of the following to the planning commission. Josh Ayler for, to fill an unexpired term ending June 1st, 2016. Jeffrey Gaiet to the regular position to fill an unexpired term ending June 1st, 2015. And Christopher Seiple for the alternate position to expire June 1st, 2013.
Thank you. With that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, please vote. That's approved with a 6-0 vote. Thank you. Agenda item 19, Councilmember Peterson, please.
Mayor, we could have done this all in one motion. I just did want to point one thing out because there's been some confusion on the issue. In this item 19, you can note that there is a change in pay taking place for the Assistant Town Engineer. Now, it has been the position of this council and continues to be the position of this council that we are going to hold off on salary changes until we have a comp and class study completed so that we know where those salaries should be. However, there are personnel rules. And in fact, in a recent article, there was some confusion about how that worked. I got emails from residents, and what we had was we do have people changing job descriptions. They actually have different duties, and of course, pay changes because of that. But we also had some changes required by our personnel rules. And in this case, just to explain it briefly, and then we'll move on, but I just want clarity on this issue. The personnel rules require that the manager, or the senior, if you will, is paid at least, is it 5% above their next lowest subordinate? And so that's what's changing the pay here, and so I just want others to understand that. And I would like this personnel rule submitted to the record if we can, just so that it's clear what's happening there. So that's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. With that, is there a motion on Agenda 19?
I move to approve item 19.
Second. With that motion, second, please vote. Thank you. That's approved with a 6-0 vote. There are no public hearing items, and so we move to administrative items. We have covered Agenda item 22, and Agenda item 23 is boards, commission, and committee reports. Do we have any council members who wish to speak? Councilmember Cook.
I just wanted to share with the council that we did have a HR cap regional meeting, and it was a very successful meeting. We had approximately, I believe, a total of five municipalities here in East Valley that attended, and we had a wonderful guest speaker from Boeing to come and talk about diversity. So it was a wonderful meeting.
Thank you. Other reports. Vice Mayor Sins?
Thank you, Mayor. Last night at the Environmental and Energy Conservation Advisory Board, a couple of things came up. One of the things on the agenda was we're trying to increase the utilization of the dog digester at Cosmo Parks, and we brainstormed some ideas. And it is being used, but not to the level we had hoped. And a couple of things came out, and we're going to implement those to improve that. The other thing is, I would like to compliment, I believe, our water conservation group. Jeff Lee made a presentation last night, and I had to go home and immediately readjust my sprinklers because, according to Jeff, I was using too much water. But when you look at what these people have been able to provide, the service they provided to the, pardon me, to the town and to HOAs, and the amount of water they are saving, and the point he made is if we're not doing that, and even potable water, reclaimed water, if we're not using that, it's water that we can put back into recharge for future use. Pardon me. So it was a great meeting, that continues to be a good group. And the other positive note is we are seeing some dramatic improvements in the amount of recycling that we're getting, so.
Thank you. Other reports. We move to Agenda item 24, the future meetings. Any discussion there? Under Communications, Agenda item 25, a report from Town Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I just wanted to let everyone know, it doesn't seem like it's possible, but we actually kicked off our budget process for the upcoming fiscal year 2013, 2014 today, led by Dawn Irvine, our budget manager, and her staff. They walked the leadership of the organization through the process that will be following this year. We're going to be fine-tuning last year's zero-based efforts, and this year, we're going to be adding an additional focus on our five-year outlook and integrating our long-term financial plan into the budgeting. So we do have a calendar, which we covered with you at the council retreat, but we have officially kicked off that process and look forward to another successful budgeting year.
Thank you, Manager Baner. Other comments on Agenda item 26 from the council? Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, are you going to talk about the Faith Group Summit?
Please. I'll join you after.
Okay. So this coming Tuesday morning, starting at, what is it?
7:15.
Seven. I didn't check the time. But we will have a Faith Group Summit here in Gilbert. Everyone's welcome to come, of course, and it will be a wonderful opportunity for us to meet and get to know each other. And there will also be some presentations about Make a Difference Day and some good information given out on that morning. So we invite everyone, that's the 25th of September.
I'll add that neighborhood leaders are also encouraged to attend. Make a Difference Day on Saturday, October 20th. There will be various service projects that are organized on a larger scale that the community will be invited to join in or to find projects locally in your neighborhoods. And then in the evening, you will be encouraged to join your neighbors in getting to know each other as part of the getting, let's see, gain, getting, that acronym? Councilmember Peterson?
Getting Arizona Involved in Neighborhoods.
Thank you. That's teamwork. And we will tell you more about that, but that will be, as was mentioned, a key focus of the Faith Group Summit next Tuesday morning at our regional library, Gilbert Regional Library. And 7:15 is registration. We'll end about 9 o'clock. Thank you. Other comments from the council?
Can you talk about North Seville?
Please.
On Tuesday, we were very fortunate to go to the southern part of the town of Gilbert to visit the neighborhoods of Seville and Trilogy, and we were able to have our study session there and got to meet a lot of wonderful folks there and the beauty of South Gilbert.
And for all from the town who helped make that happen, we appreciate it. It was our second regional study session, and we are doing that now every three months. And it was a great experience to be in South Gilbert and meet with many of the residents down there. Thank you. Moving to Agenda item 27, yesterday, there were several council members that had the opportunity to be at the Sun Valley Community Church. The United Way organized efforts valleywide for volunteers to come and for those who are homeless and in need of special assistance to come to our Sun Valley Community Church. I was given, and I know this will be very hard to see, but it's a plate that says "Unite to End Hunger." And what this plate was, the significance is that in Maricopa County right now, there are approximately 80,000 families that are struggling to have enough food. And there is a website, and I will give this to our chief digital officer to make this website available, and also this plate will be available in the mayor's office for display. The website is vsuw.org. And as you go out to this website, it takes about 15 seconds to do a pledge. And there's no obligation on anyone's part, but after you do the pledge, the Arizona Diamondback Organization will donate a dollar to efforts to feed families in Maricopa County. And then the pledge is really saying that we will do our part to stay informed where we can help to do so. And I encourage you to take advantage of that. And again, I thank the United Way. I thank the Sun Valley Community Church and those involved in that activity yesterday for their efforts in supporting Maricopa County and Gilbert residents. Councilmember Daniels, was there anything else you wanted to add to that? I know that I appreciate your attendance, and I thank Councilmember Cooper, I think. Thank you.
We thank our citizens who are here at council chambers. Normally, the council likes to have a few minutes to meet with you after. There is an executive session scheduled, and so as I end this, end this part of the meeting, I will ask for a motion to recess our special meeting and reconvene an executive session.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.